Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All be seated. Welcome to the November 2023 Regular School Board Meeting of the RBB schools. And let's see, are there any visitors who want to make a comment this evening? No? Okay. Then we'll go right to the, oh, for real call, let the record show all members are present. For the Mustang Movement, we have H. Wood Junior High School. And Dr. Sanders, would you do the introductions?
Yes. First of all, so nice to have everybody come out and hear my report tonight. But you're gonna have to, you have to stay to the end of the meeting for that. You know, as an educator, you're just so excited on those moments when you could tell your students love what they're doing and they're fully engaged in what they're doing. And Mrs. Air, who's our, one of our teachers at the junior high, I think has experienced that recently with some students. In fact, so much that they took a trip to Boston to the National Journalism Conference. And so I'm gonna turn things over to Mrs. Air and her students.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Air. I teach English and Journalism at the junior high school. So this opportunity presented itself, for a couple of years, actually, I've been trying to get us all on this trip, and myself included, just as a way to boost our journalism program that we started just kind of on a whim a few years ago as like an honors extension. And now it's turned into, we have two full classes of sixth graders. And every year, we choose some mentor kids who, we call them advanced journalism students, and they just kind of go above and beyond in their sixth grade year, just leading groups of kids. And they pretty much run the newspaper for me. So it's the Colts Chronicles, ColtsChronicles.com, if you ever want to visit, to see the happenings. But they do a great job. And just, I knew that this would be a great experience for them. And they just had the maturity and the leadership skills in order to make this a worthwhile trip for them. So we did. And I'm gonna let them do the talking and see, just tell them what it meant to them to be able to go. So I'm gonna have them introduce themselves, one at a time.
So I'm Drew Fig and I'm journalism mentor.
I'm Bryson Collins.
I'm Poppy Bishop.
I'm Kinley Butler.
I'm Emma Curtis.
All right. And they put together this little slideshow for you guys, just to kind of give you a recap of their trip, so.
So November 1st, Wednesday after school, we all met at the airport and we flew into Boston that night. And there wasn't a lot to do because we got to our hotel late in the night. So we ate dinner and then went to bed.
On November 2nd, we went to, we went to Fenway Park. We got to tour the stadium. And we got to go in the locker room, which was pretty cool. And then we also got to see some historical sites, like Paul Revere's house where the Boston massacre was. And then later that evening, we went back to the hotel for the opening night at the conference center. And then we went to bed as well, again.
So this was November 3rd. This was the first day of the conference. It was really fun. It was definitely a little bit stressful going to each session, but it was really fun. Sometimes we split up and went to different sessions, sports sessions, interviewing sessions. And then we regrouped about it when we got back to the hotel, took some fun pictures in our sunglasses. But yeah.
Guys, we just want to say something about the convention?
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, say something we learned at the convention.
Something I learned at the convention was I met lots of new people and I also learned like a ton of new interviewing skills.
Something I learned at the convention was like, we did like these icebreakers. It was like an icebreaker session. And it was like super fun. And I got to learn more about myself and who I kind of am. And it was very interesting.
I liked the sessions and like learning about the different like sites that we can make since we're just on Google Sites right now. But the different things that we can add or take away from our site to make it even better than it already is.
So I liked the sports part because like how to approach athletes and what questions to ask was my favorite part.
One of my favorite parts was the humor one. It was about how to include like satire and humor in your articles and how to make it more funny.
On November 4th, after a shortened day at the conference, we ended up going to Salem. And we got to see lots of the places where like Hocus Pocus was filmed, which that was my favorite part. It was really fun. And then after that, we just kind of, we spent most of the evening in Salem and then we just went back to the hotels.
Right. So before we went on the flight, we went to this aquarium and it was like really fun. There was like these tiny, tiny starfish. They were so cute. I was in love, okay? And then we went to this graveyard. It was super scary. Poppy actually got really scared here. And then we went on our flight and I got to sit next to Poppy, which was awesome. So this was, this part was like really fun to go to the aquarium and see the sea lions and all the different marine animals. It was probably my favorite part of the trip.
Yeah, we took them to Arthur's Ridge, which Nathaniel Hawthorne and Louisa May Alcott and all of those guys, they still don't know who any of those people are. And I just kept saying, this, where this is the house. They're like, yeah, whatever, Mrs. Air. So they'll appreciate it later when they actually hear those names, but.
We all had an amazing time in Boston and wanted to thank the people that made it possible for us to take the trip. We learned so many new journalism skills at the conference, so much history and memories that will last forever. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for the group. Were you able to show some of what you do, like your Colts Chronicles, to other students who were there?
We didn't do a lot of that this time. This was our first time attending the conference. And so there's lots of opportunities. Now that we kind of have a feel for what it's gonna look like, they do all kinds of student swap shops. And like you can like sit down with professionals and have them critique your websites. I will say that these were the very few middle school students that were there. But I will say, you might be, yeah, there might be that. But I will say that they hung right in there with the high school students. They asked really great questions. They took notes. They were very mature. And I don't feel like it was above their heads at all. It was just, I knew it would be a great group of students to take. Just being, even though they're seventh graders, they just have a lot of maturity. I will say that the middle school session that we did go to, I had one takeaway in that our program is leaps and bounds ahead of a lot of middle school programs out there because everything that they talked about that you could do, we were already doing. And so I'm really proud of the work that these guys have done and the level at which they're, they're holding themselves to for the standard of the Colts Chronicles, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to recognize our awesome marching Mustangs. You know, band competition, and these guys are the experts, not me, but it's tough. When, when I go to the competitions and every band is creative, every band does an excellent job. You know, I try to, I try to score. I keep tabs of who was placing where. And, you know, I, I'm just so impressed with our band because of watching the other bands they have to compete against. And so when we say that our band is a state championship band, that's a big accomplishment. Being able to say they're a state championship band back to back says something about how special they are and how special Mr. Wells is and his team, Mr. Kaler. And so I'd like to have Mr. Wells come up and to just say a few words, if you could, and introduce who's here tonight. Or you could do like Mrs. Air and have them talk.
I was gonna do that. They didn't know. I mean, it invited them at the last minute so that like I can bring them up and make them say things. But I did bring my leadership group with, starting with my two drum majors, Kalen Dunham and Olivia Lloyd. So if you would stand up and come here. These two, last year, we graduated thirty-three seniors, the largest senior class I've ever had here, which in return meant this year, we were gonna have the largest young class that we've had. And we were asked, you know, I've been asked about this a lot. Mr. Kaler and I talked a lot about this in the fact that like, this might be one of the best teaching jobs that he and I have done together because we were babies. I mean, we had a lot of eighth graders, a lot of freshmen. And with a huge turnover from seniors last year, we were pretty young. And we weren't really, I mean, we always go into the season thinking that we're gonna be definitely placed in the top 10 in the state. But I don't think state championship was really our, like, we weren't talking about it until later, like literally the last two weeks. Because we have, we did have some babies. But I had two wonderful drum majors. These young ladies were both new to the job. And they did a fantastic job of being not only like a student leader, but amazing role models. And both these young women were very strong. They, on the good days, my good days and my bad days, they were, they were like, they knew how to handle me, which is always the biggest prerequisite of a drum major. Because that's always the first thing I ask is like, can you handle my bad day? And they're like, I don't know what you mean. I'm like, okay, great. Then you're gonna be fine. If you don't know, we're gonna be okay. But these two, for the first year rookie drum majors were fantastic. And I'm gonna leave it to these two to talk for just a few seconds. And then we'll pull up Mr. Kaler and let him finish off the speech. So Olivia and Kalen.
So I was head drum major this year. And this is actually my first and last year being a drum major because I am a senior. And I will say, our show was very hard this year. And especially with what Mr. Wells said, us having a very young group, it was like hard to get them like motivated. And I could tell that every single one of them did work. And they wanted like to be a part of our group and do like everything that we do. And I could tell that they really loved it by the end of it. And I loved leading them and seeing everything that they, they've accomplished, so.
Like she was saying, our, our group worked really well this year. Our, we have an awesome band director and an awesome staff that have helped us so much. Nothing could be possible without what they teach us, not only like how to do the things we do, but how to act in life and stuff. So, yeah, they did great.
That's actually, I think the most that Kalen has spoke. I'm proud of you. You actually like, you can talk.
Mr. Wells did not warn me either that I was gonna have to speak tonight. But I'm just gonna play off what Dr. Sanders said, which is, I sent a message to all the parents on Sunday after state finals. And I said, Derek Latham and I had the privilege of working on the retirement video for our old band director from Northview. And the, one of their main designer people like gave his part of the talk. And he said that like, you know, winning in this activity is very difficult, you know. And we're fortunate to have done it twice now in a row, three times total. And like, but it's, it's hard because it has to be the right group of students with the right show, on the right day, with the right performance. And there have to be the right six people up in that press box. So it's just, you know, as Mr. Wells said, you know, we had to work pretty hard this year and just incredibly proud of all the students and the accomplishment.
I, I was so thrilled one day, I recently, when a parent came up to me and said that we have the best band director in the state of Indiana. Because he was so impressed how Mr. Wells and his team can motivate students to work hard all summer in really hot temperatures sometimes and bad weather, early in the morning, late at night, and love it. And so that, I'll never forget that. And the other thing I'll never forget is watching Mr. Wells on his scooter, flying through campus. We're gonna have to put a speed limit sign up there. Thank you. And we're very proud of you guys for all of your hard work in representing our high school so well. And thank you to our Journalism Junior High students. I can't wait to see what you do next year and the year after that. It'll be really fun to watch you guys.
Congratulations on the achievements that you all have. So really appreciate it. If you don't want to stay for the superintendent's report, you can leave if you want to. You're welcome to stay, though. Well, that was awesome. Move on to our consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes for October 23rd of 23, our regular board meeting. We have financial. We have the treasurer's report for October 23. And Mr. Durnall, the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have gross wages on October the 7th, 2023, of $747,636.71 for gross wages on October 27th, 2023, for $684,255.69 for a grand total of $1,431,892.40. We have claims prepays from this, from October 1st through October 31st, $1,000,010,963.26 for a claim on regular vouchers, 11/20/2023, for $534,422.85 for Forest Hills vouchers on 11/21/2023, for $75,700.19 for a grand total of $1,621,866.30 for a grand total, excuse me, $3,052,978.70. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. There is personnel resignations, retirements, new leaves and terminations, C1 through 7, and personnel appointments and transfers, P1 through 34. Also, there is the annual renewal agreement for the continuation of contract services with Hope Again. Is there anything you'd like to say? So do we have a motion?
Time to move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we move on to the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Mr. Irwin.
You guys should have the cash flows there in front of you. I'll give you a second to get those out. So the education fund, great shape as it pertains to year-end finish. Updated a number of different things in there from last month, but all in all, it looks pretty similar to what it did. We've updated kind of what ADM reconciliation will look like, which was pretty spot on. I talked about some of the savings there from moving around some staff salaries as we spend out a grant, which is a federal grant with the SPED grant, which is the SPED Part B grant. And then also just talked about that we'll get our summer school dispersment for reimbursement from the state in November. And again, that we're happy with where we are. We're progressing really well. So moving over to debt service. I put a little more into that one because we had talked about this throughout the year. So that we're gonna eat into some cash as far as what our, our beginning and year-end balance was. And that pertains to some statutory laws as far as what cash balances are. And then also, we made that choice to lower our total tax rate earlier in the year. But it does look a little bit better than last month as I kind of cleaned up some in-the-weeds details as far as what to expect with our December settlement from the auditor's office. Because our, we were in a unique situation where our certified levy and our abstract levy were different. And debt service being a protected fund, they always go by your certified levy and not your abstract levy. So that was nice to clear that up. Operations fund. Again, we're sitting about as even as you're gonna get in, in a budget of that size. It's trended, trended pretty close to kind of how we've, we've expected it to most of the year, which is a good thing. Still have to, to get in the last two months of claims. And then also just the final dispersment as far as, again, those, that December settlement of tax. That one does go by the abstract levy, which was a little bit lower, which meant the dollars that we actually collect are a little bit lower. So that is figured into what you see as well. But again, still sitting pretty even on year-end. So with that, I will take any questions as it pertains to cash flows. But again, it hasn't moved around a whole lot from where you saw it last month. There's obviously some in-the-weed details that got updated, but not major differences from what you saw from last month to this month.
Approve the Indiana Bond Bank Resolution. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so this is something that we've done yearly. We talked about this during the budget process as far as you guys approved a resolution that allowed us to levy for the TAW interest within our budget. So that's something that was factored into our budget. This is actually going through the steps to get into the bond bank program, which is that intermediary of cash flow in between tax dispersments. So we're on that weird, a little bit weirder schedule where our payments are due in January and then a lot of them are due in July. And so it kind of puts us in an awkward position of fronting some of those dollars prior to tax dispersment. So this allows us to make sure that the cash flows are there so that the account doesn't run super negative. We pay that back at the end of the year. We've done that for the last four or five years, I think, in a row. So this has become fairly routine. And then as, as future bond issues come on and the older ones roll off, we've already started that process of saying, hey, we, we're gonna look at when, we're gonna do a bond. We'll, we'll do one on that June and December timeline if we're gonna do one like that. So that kind of will even that up. So this is just permission to continue through the program. It does not commit us to it at this point. But we have turned in the application and this is that, you guys giving us permission to participate in the actual TAW program.
Is there a motion? Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, permission to purchase a 2024 bus. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so this would be a permission to order because we won't make the actual purchase until it actually arrives as far as paying for it. But we have to put the order in now for it to even come in 2024. So this is for a 14-passenger Type A bus. So it's a smaller bus, kind of similar in size to what you'd see on one of the mini buses. But because it has the flashing lights and the different pieces like that, it allows us to do normal roadside pickups and some of those, those things. But again, we're asking, this is vetted through the consortium, through the CIE-CSC Co-op. So it meets bid-out requirements. And so we're asking for the low bid, which is a Thomas at $96,400. So with that, I'm asking for your permission to order that bus for 2024.
I'll second.
Move it second. Any questions, comments?
Quick question. So that's not a full-size bus. That's what I, when I saw the price of it.
Yeah, it's one of the, it's one of the smaller, it's like similar in size to like a mini bus, like the white buses that you would see.
You said 24-passenger?
A 14-passenger. It's a smaller passenger bus, yeah.
Yeah, because there's so many options that are listed on that. I thought that was kind of a unique look.
Yeah, so as you run through that quote, you're seeing all the different little pieces that go into all the finer details that make up the bus as far as the different options that come along with it.
So when we go to this, it's already been bidded out through the Co-op? Okay. And do we put it in payment now?
No, we put in, we'll put out, we'll put in a purchase order and then we'll make the order and then they'll start to secure the bus for us.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That's a pretty substantial change or difference between it and the other two bids.
Yeah, it's still definitely a lot higher than what it used to be a few years ago. But yeah, some of the larger buses have, are considerably more. So, yeah.
Okay. Had a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Now, we have consideration to approve a temporary contract bus amendment. And Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so you guys are well aware and the community as well, we've been doing a lot of shuffling with bus routes as we've faced a staffing shortage there. We do have some hope going on there as far as some people coming through the pipeline. Our community and different members have stepped up and different people applying for the job. So hopefully, we're able to secure some more staff there for busing. But because of that, we've, we've made different adjustments. And one of those has been with a contracted bus route that's, that we needed to extend that. And so because of that, we, we've needed to do a temporary, this is not meant to be long-term for these two. It's for Route 6 and Route 26. But until we are able to get the staffing that we need, it allows us to, to make those adjustments to make sure that kids get home safely and in a timely manner each day. So with Route 6, what it's adding is about 2.36 miles per day, which amounts to an extra $10.12 a day. And on Route 26, it's an extra 3.36 miles per day, which amounts to $14.41 more a day for that route as well during the temporary time that we need to do this. And these have been looked at and were done by Christine. So those have been reviewed.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Move it second. Any questions on these?
Just got a quick question on this. So for the viewing audience.
We're, we're training folks. We have a training program here, right?
Yeah, we train.
How long does that process take?
It kind of depends on the person and how quickly they're able to pass the test and do some of those different pieces. But typically, it can take as long as six weeks. Sometimes it can take as short as four weeks. It really depends on the person and how quickly they're able to, to get through some of the material. Because there are, you know, different tests and things that they'll have to pass and then different amounts of training. We do train our, the employees and they're getting paid while they train as we've hired them. So we tried to remove all barriers and try to get through that process. But there's certain things that make that process last longer. So we're gonna try to move through them as fast as we can while still meeting all the requirements.
When they're in training, are they already on corporation benefits at that point? Or is it after 90 days?
They, they would come on just like any corporation employee that we would hire. That's a full-time person. So they would be eligible to, their benefits would start after the, after the first 30 days. And then as far as moving into anything else that's applicable through the classified handbook, so just like that. But yes, they're our employee. Once, once we hire them and they start working for us, they're still, they're getting paid while they train. So that's no different. It's just a matter of getting them to, we're able to be able to be released on a route by themselves. And that takes time because they gotta train with another driver and put in hours and pass the test and all that stuff. And that requires us to train them to do that.
How many, how many hours does that equate? Is it 28 hours a week, 30 hours a week they work, once they're, once they're up and rolling?
On a normal week, yeah, it's probably gonna be 30, depending on how many trips they would take. They might, you know, might be closer to 40 hours. It could be between, usually between 30 and 40 hours. So it just depends on, on how many ECA trips they pick up. There's always the options to pick up the different extracurricular trips for the sporting events and stuff like that. And so that allows people to pick up more hours as well.
I'd like to give a shout out to the Transportation Department. They've been really crippled with the staffing, staffing issues. And they've been pulling off some major miracles. And every now and then, there's a glitch. But, you know, they, they are doing a wonderful job and hope they understand that the board appreciates them and all the hard work they're putting in.
One of the things you hear on the radio every day is just the teamwork that goes on between them. Whether someone say, hey, I can step up and help you out here. Hey, you want me to come by and pick up that kid? You need this. And so that teamwork is ever-present with them, which is something that we constantly say, you know, talking to them, it's like, it's amazing to hear those things go on. Because the care that they put into making sure that a kid gets home safe, that they were arrived safely, that someone received them if they're younger, the back and forth communication between the schools about what's going on, there's a lot going on there. And so they do a great job. And you can feel how much they care about making sure that they do well by our kids and by our family. So it's, it's really tremendous when you hear that teamwork over the radio.
Yeah. They've got precious cargo that they, and, you know, our students that ride the bus, they, the bus is drivers, our, our staff that's watching them during that time period and, and caring for them. And I just appreciate the staff doing a good job with that.
Yeah, one quick story. During Bus Appreciation Week, we were, went out towards the buses. And as I walked up to one of the buses at the elementary school, you And as I walked up to one of the buses at the elementary school, you could see one of our drivers, it was at the younger routes, and she was reading a children's book with a couple of the kids as we were waiting for the, for the dismissal. And so it was really, it was a really cute moment, just in, you know, she's, I love my job, you know, this is great, I, I really enjoy this. And that was kind of, it was one of those picturesque moments, I would've got my phone out and got the picture of like, she's just sitting there reading as they're waiting to dismiss, and they're reading this picture book with a couple of the kids. It was really awesome, so.
Awesome. Any further discussion? We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we've got consideration to approve the 2023 to 2024 Teachers' Collective Bargaining Agreement. We'll start with Dr. Sanders.
Very important night to be able to have the board approve the contract. We have held our required public meetings. We have to have one prior to the start of bargaining. And then once a tentative agreement has been reached, we need to have a, another public hearing before the board approves the contract at a regular board meeting. And we had, we have a very excellent group of teachers led by Doug Yules, who represent the other teachers across the corporation. We had some very productive bargaining sessions that led to a contract that I believe is good for our teachers and good for the school corporation. And that's, that's what you're after. You want to be able to support and compensate our excellent teachers, but you also want to have a contract that is good for the school corporation financially. Matt, do you have anything you would like to add to that?
I just thought one of the things I was most excited about is that we were able to, to do a lot of things that mattered to a lot of people. And mattered to a lot of people in, in different areas, whether it was some of the benefit pieces, or it was some of the pay pieces, or some of the things that we were able to do with extracurricular activities. And getting more people involved with our kids, getting more, you know, raising some of the rates of that to be more competitive within our area. And so we had spent a lot of time dating back over the last year, gathering input from different people about some of those things that were important as it pertained to ECA's. And we accomplished a lot there. And so I'm really proud of, of what we came together and worked towards, because it was really something that came from a lot of different people and a lot of different input across the board. And so it was a nice mixture of things, that whether it was for athletics, or for fine arts, or academics, all the different pieces. And so it was a really well-rounded piece that we were able to do there. So it was definitely, definitely a great thing for, for our teachers and for our staff, so.
We have a motion.
Collective bargaining agreement?
Second.
I just want, I just want to thank the Mr. Yules and the Teachers Association and, and Mr. Irwin, some of the contract language is cleaned up, and it's, it gets cleaner every year. Because there was some things, it was kind of a mess a few years ago. So thank you guys for all your efforts, and thanks for addressing the ECA as well.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have consideration to approve the classified agreements and rate increases. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so the, the approach of this was similar to what we've done the last few years. As we go through this process, we, we take into account a lot of different factors as far as how to determine what's appropriate in different places. And so we pull in data from ISBA, from IASBO, from neighboring areas as far as how competitive we are with pay as we, you know, compete more than ever for employees. And so as we've gone through this process the last couple of years, we've been really intentional about finding places where we need to be more competitive with our rates. We've also moved a lot of our, all of our scales to this point, pending your approval, to zero to 10-plus years, so that people aren't waiting 25 years to age to those scales, and also making sure that we're paying competitively for that position while still valuing the experience and, and the education that people bring to that job. And so the minimum on the hour raise that, that is seen across the board is at 75 cents other than a couple of places in nutrition services where Vicki felt like that was where she wanted to go budget-wise, because she had some other goals as it pertained to some of the things with nutrition services. And then in other places, it was more where it could have been a couple dollars on the hour. And so we were really strategic in looking at that data and where we were positioned to try to take intentional, intentional swings at fixing some of those gaps and being more competitive. And so if you look at our pay over the last three or four years, it's been really incredible about what you guys have approved and what we've been able to do for our employees and our school corporation. And it, and it is definitely a reflection of some of the changes that we've been able to make. That's a wholesale, as a group, as far as how well we try to take care of the finances here at the school corporation. So really pleased with what we, we are able to present to you. It is very aggressive as far as, our cash balances are in a good place, and overall, the amount of new dollars that are being asked to be approved are, are pretty substantial. And there's a chance that we could eat into a little bit of cash to do that over the next coming year. But it's one of those things that we're in a place that we're able to do it. And so this is the right time to do it, in my opinion, as far as to, to invest in our staff. We know that people are the solution, and people are what make things work. And so we're excited about what we're able to ask for your approval here tonight for our classified staff.
Okay, you have a motion?
A second.
Move in second. Any questions, comments?
I just want to thank, thank you, Mr. Irwin, for taking the time to continue to address the, some of the gaps we had. And everybody in this room is, we, none of us would be without a teacher, or a classified staff, or a bus driver. It took the community to, to bring us all to where we are today. So thank you for making us competitive in the community.
Hope our employees know that we value them very highly. Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have consideration to approve classified HSA contributions.
Yeah, so this is something that I'll try not to have in a, at a separate agenda item next year, where I'll just memorialize it in the actual classified handbook. But this is something we've done the last couple of years since we started putting money and contributing into HSA accounts. So health savings accounts are accounts that are, that are able to be used for someone that's in a high deductible health plan. Currently, two of our four health plans are eligible for an HSA account. And so what we're asking for is to continue to be able to make those contributions in alignment with what we've, what we have agreed to in the Teachers' CBA. And so that's $300 into a single-plan HSA, or $800 into any employee-plus plan. So that might be employee-plus children, employee-plus spouse, or a family plan, where they would get $800 from the school corporation deposited into that count in January of each plan year. And so again, doing that in, in alignment with how we handle those things. Right now, our current setup as it pertains to insurance and benefits in that way is, is the same across the board, whether you're in central office, or you're working in the building, or you're driving a school bus, or you're a teacher, or what that is. And so just asking to be able to do that same thing for our classified staff who choose to participate in those high deductible health plans.
Have motion?
Contributions for classified staff?
Move in second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, it's consideration to approve administrator contracts for the 2023, 24, and 24, 25 school years. Dr. Sanders?
Before, I mean, it's been my experience most of my career that the administrator salaries, there never seems to be a rhyme or reason to how those salaries are determined. And so a few years ago, we started a practice of having an administrative salary committee that, every year, that rotates to different principals or assistant principals to serve on the committee. And we look at comparative data to see how other school corporations are paying for each individual position. And then we have a scale that we, that we utilize. So everybody is on the same page, knows what's happening. It also provides an opportunity for the administrators to share with us and talk with us about ideas that they might have for compensation and how we could support them. And so it's very productive meetings. So tonight, we are asking the board to approve a two-year contract that will go back to July 1st, 2023. So it'll be 23, 24, and 24, 25 school years. And each of those contracts were in the board packet for you to review. And so we recommend your approval. Matt, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I just, I appreciate, like you said, just the transparency and gathering that dat, that data and saying, here's, here's the data of which we're looking at to make decisions and, and to make recommendations to you all with. And we are able to have board member support on that, administrators sitting in on that, get ideas, get input. And I, I think just having that transparency and having that ability to have that rhyme and reason in the decision-making, I think creates buy-in. And so hopefully that's, hopefully goes a long way.
Okay, we have motion.
I have move approval.
Second.
Move in second. Any questions?
Both Matt and Jerry were saying, I think the, having been through some other times, it's nice that the, the way that the compensation for teachers and administrators has grown over time. It's just a much more sane place, and I just, I think it's better for everybody, but that's just where I am.
Take this moment, since we're talking about administrators, to thank our administrators who've come to the board meetings every month and, and sit through the whole thing to come to my report.
That's why they're here.
We, we, we have such a great team. And so I really appreciate them.
Ditto.
Yeah, and, you know, what was talked about before in the public hearings about the teachers' contract, how people go to the table with laying their cards out, not trying to hold them close to their chest, and, and just laying it all out there, getting all the information out, really does make the process better. And I really enjoyed the conversations that we had in the administrative salary committee being that, that went really well. Appreciated the ideas and thoughts that came through there. So anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve the distribution of teacher appreciation grant funds. It's great to have those come through again. So, Dr. Sanders?
Yeah, so every year, the state of Indiana sends each school corporation an allocation of dollars that is to go towards rewarding teachers who are effective or highly effective. There are certain guidelines that, that come along with that. So one of those is that once the school system receives those funds, we have 20 days, which we must issue then a stipend to the teachers. And it's estimated that we're going to receive that stip, that allocation on December 1st. So we'll have 20 days to be able to put that together and send it out to the, the teachers. So right now, Debutate, our treasurer, is looking through the ratings that the principals have come, come up with from the evaluations and determining who was highly effective, who was effective. And that's important, because the, the law says that highly effective teachers must receive 25% more than the effective teachers. And so exactly how much that'll be, we don't know just yet. But it is a really nice time for the teachers to get that, and it's right before Christmas. And then we will also be giving an equal stipend to effective and highly effective administrators. And those appreciation stipends will be given to the administrators and the same time as the teachers get theirs. And that'll come out of the Operation Education Fund. You cannot use the teacher appreciation grant dollars from the state to, to reward anybody but teachers. So I recommend your approval of giving us the permission to distribute these funds.
Is the, move in second. Is the amount set yet, or do we have?
Well, we, we have received our amount. It's a little over $98,000 overall, which is comparable.
That has traditionally, it ends up being about $300, $400 per, per qualifying teacher, I think.
And it's, that amount is different for every school corporation.
What was, what was the amount again?
Distribution amount was a little over $98,000. It typically ranges in a couple hundred dollars for each teacher. And then obviously, the, the highly effective is would receive 25% more. So it's a little bit of a math calculation to back it into what it equals out to, because you have to factor in all of the employer costs and all that stuff to go back into it. But with it being very similar in all the numbers, it'll, it'll look very similar to what it's looked like the last couple of years. In different years, we've, sometimes we've been able to push it out during a regularly-scheduled pay week. Sometimes we've done it in a special, a special pay. Right now, we're probably looking at trying to do it in a special pay, just because it's a little bit cleaner from the taxes, employer costs, not having all the auto calculations. And it just makes it a little bit easier. And obviously, you just notice it, because it'll hit on a different day than a paycheck. So that's always a nice thing, too. So we're, we're trying to finalize those plans to roll that out. We've got to contact in person and say, hey, we're gonna have a different, possibly a different payday. That causes all the in, in-the-weeds details that maybe you guys don't want to know. But we're, we're working through all of that stuff on the back end to make sure that it rolls out smoothly and, and to get that backed into exactly what the amounts will be. But it'll look very similar to what it's looked the last few years.
Similarly, for the regular contracts, they began in July. When do you think the back pay portion will come?
Yeah, so we started, started prepping, started prepping on that a little bit earlier. So working with payroll and, and the business office to say, here, here are our goals, here's what we want to try to get done. The goal is always to try to get everything done as far as retro, as far as the back pay and the new bi-weeklies and all that stuff, to get it done before the holidays, meaning get it done before Christmas time. With the primary goal being to try to get it done, pending you all's approval of everything here tonight, which we've mostly gotten already, to try to roll out a lot of it between this Friday and the following pay, which should be the first pay in December. We have that third pay, that, the third pay, which would be the second pay in December, that does fall before Christmas, that is kind of a little bit of a fallback. This year's contract with the changes to ECA makes things even more in the weeds difficult, because you're going back and doing all of these different calculations to figure out what it is for each individual person or different situation. And that also is, also the case with hourly as well, which also creates some more in the weeds. So trying to prep them, hey, what can you handle? What's doable? They've been working really hard on that. They take a lot of pride in trying to get that out to people in, in a really expedited fashion, so that I also know that, that, that feels pretty sweet to have it happen at, at that timeline. Sometimes I don't like the timing of when we have to do it. But at the same time, I do kind of like the timing, because it's always nice for families around the holidays to have that little bit of extra cheer to say, hey, thank you, whether it's a tag, or whether it's some of the, the changes in rates and all that stuff that we've been fortunate enough to be able to be in a position to do. It just, it hits well for people. And so hopefully, it, it makes people feel a little bit better about, you know, what we try to do to take care of them.
That's one of the most asked questions I get.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, we have a motion and a second. So any further discussion?
I just want to, I want to issue a challenge to the administrators in the back. And to the Teacher Association President, Mr. Yules. What he's just talking about, I have no idea, because I've never had to do it. But the amount of work that goes on in the back office with the payroll and the benefits, it's a, it's a boat ton of work. So if you have a chance, encourage teachers to do something nice. Do something nice, say, hey, thanks for all you guys are doing over here. Buy him a fruitcake or something, or donuts or something, just, but, but that is a donuts or something. Just, but, but that is a lot of stuff going on, because that's a lot of stuff to do retro. And I didn't think about it, because that, that ECA, I saw all that long list of ECA positions. I'm cross-eyed. I mean, that's like a lot. So, so thank you to the, to the girls back here, or the ladies, and Mr. Kiefer. Thanks for all their backend work. And now I've set the bar high. They've got to be done before December 23rd.
The last thing we want to do is oversell and under-deliver. We'd rather undersell and over-deliver every time. So yeah, they're, they're working hard on it.
That's, that's really neat. So, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders?
Mr. Tucker, I liked your idea of someone sending donuts to the office.
If you want donuts.
I'm sending you an apple.
Hey, I just wanted to start off by recognizing, we recognized a lot of students tonight. But I went to see the Addams Family performance, and it's just, it's my kind of humor. It's just funny. And, you know, the, just like the band, Students, the, you just don't really, unless you're in drama, you don't really understand how much work and time and energy goes in. It's not just practicing a few lines. It's, it's memorizing a lot of lines, getting the, the set ready, and painting, and sawing. And it was just, it was just really good. So I wanted to recognize those students. Wanted to give you a little update on the Edge. So we were hoping that the Edge, the alternative school that's now meeting over at the high school, would be able to move into their new home a week from today. But we got word today that the furniture, some of the furniture we're waiting on, there's still, of course, we've been hearing this for several years now, delayed shipment. But we're hoping to get them in there in December. And we, we have conversations going on about just taking a look at our alternative ed program and, and taking another look at, at the Edge and just making sure that we're reaching all the needs of our students and making sure that we're, we're helping everybody to meet success. And so I just wanted to throw that out there, that give you a little update, that hopefully very soon, they'll be in their new home next door. 'Tis the Season is a performance that we look forward every year, December 9th and 10th. On December 9th, the performance will be at 7:00. And the 10th will be at 2:00 in the high school auditorium. Now, I hesitate to let you in on this, because it might keep you away. But there's, yours truly is going to have a part in 'Tis the Season this year, so.
Singing a solo? Are you singing a solo?
No, no. At church, you only ask me to sing tenor. Tenor, 11 miles away. All right, we'll move on. So I also wanted to make mention that as we go into the winter months, we have a lot of activity. You know, I don't think our high school or our campus, I don't think there's ever a time where there's, it's completely empty. There's always some activity going on. And I was looking at the activities coming up and, because we've already had a busy year, a lot of great things happening, and there's more to come with girls and boys' basketball, swimming and diving, wrestling, gymnastics, show choir performances. I'd really love to go to those. And then robotics. We'll have not only robotics competitions at the elementary and junior high level, but our high school robotics team will be participating in two competitions this year. So that's pretty exciting. We've been working towards that for a long time. Solar eclipse, April still seems to be far away, but it'll be here in no time. And so there's going to be a solar eclipse on April 8th. And we are going to be in the, the prime path. And from all that I hear, as people have talked with communities who've been in the prime path before, it's something that we will, not just the eclipse itself, but all the people that are going to be here, I've had it compared to the same amount of people as if we would have three Super Bowls here at the same time. And so we met with, Matt and I met with the Ellisville Police Department and Ellisville Fire Department last week. And they wanted to know what we were doing for that day. And they were kind of sharing what, what is on their plate for April 8th. And so for April 8th, as far as Edgewood Schools, there will be no school at all that day for students. It's a flex day, so it's one of our days that we received from the state where, as you remember, we asked for a waiver for two days, so we could track our instructional time by minutes instead of days. So April 8th will be one of those days. So there'll be no students. Normally, we would be having the teachers come in for their professional development. But from what I understand, we want to keep our, our staff off the roads. And it actually will help the law enforcement if we do that. And so we'll make sure that our PD for that day will be virtual. The campus is going to be closed. Now, I know there are some that who are trying to have some fundraisers, but we just think the risk is, is too much, because we have to school the next day. We really don't know. It's not like the fireworks, where we know the community coming to that. There are people from all over who will be coming. So we just think it's safer to close our campus. So we're actually developing a plan, a security plan, to keep people from coming into the campus to be able to watch the event. And it's my understanding that the people will start showing up 24 to 48, 48 hours earlier, and will be there afterwards. So we want to, we're taking a cautious approach to that. And then finally, I thought this was pretty cool. So in 2021, Governor Holcomb announced an initiative called READY. And READY means Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative. And so through READY 1.0, up to $50 million was made available through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation to meet the self-determined needs of 17 different regions in the state of Indiana. So they just now launched region, yeah, no, I said region 2.0. It's, it's READY 2.0 here. I made an error there. But READY 2.0 was recently launched, launched, and it will be giving $75 million to 15 different participating regions to enhance the quality of life, enhance the quality of place, and enhance the quality of opportunity to transform Indiana's regions into talent magnets, where people live, work, grow, and thrive. And we are in the Uplands Region, Indiana Uplands Region. And that includes not only Monroe County, but Owen, Brown, Green, Lawrence, Martin, Davies, Washington, Orange, DuBois, and Crawford. And so recently, they had a READY 2.0 listening session that was facilitated by the Community Foundation and ROI. And myself and Jennifer Barrett attended that. And we were able to give our input, represent Ellisville, represent our school corporation, and hopefully be, be able to apply, to use some of those funds. One area that I would really like, we have a lot of areas that we want to use it to support our student-run businesses and programs like that. But I've been working with Envision Ellisville for a, the Safe Routes to School Program, and to, so that we can build up our sidewalks around our school campus and keep our students safe. And so I hope to, to get that in there and be able to get some funding. And it was just a really neat experience, brainstorming and looking at the needs of not only Ellisville, but our whole region. So I was really excited to participate with that. And I know Jennifer was, too. And I appreciate her being there. And finally, just want to say I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and just thankful for all of you and, and your support and what you do for our community.
Thank you very much. RBBA comments, Mr. Yules?
I don't have a lot of words, but I kept writing things down, kept writing things down. I'll try to be brief as always, because this is, this might be a record night here. We'll see. In reference to the teacher appreciation grant, figuring that out with two different paid levels, it's really like a heinous, multi-step algebra word problem. So if you want to see the solution to that, you can come to my board at F-131. It'll be up tomorrow. But I'd like to thank John, Mr. Kiefer, for all his work, as you talked about, Mr. Tucker. Because we were talking post-bargaining, I was always thinking, like, probably some mid-payday in December, they're, they're going to get all this done. Because that's a lot of work. You got contracts, you got ECA, you got, you got everything to do. And when they said, oh, we might get this out by Friday, I'm like, whoa, that's, that's impressive. So yeah, we will pass on our support for that and our appreciation. Also, obviously, thanks for approving the contract. I think it helps have an experienced group. I've had several colleagues that have kept showing up to do bargaining every year. So that, that really helps, just knowing everybody, as Dr. Sanders said, and Matt. It just makes things smoother. I think this was about as smooth as it got this fall. Still, things always iron out, that is bargaining as it is. But, you know, looking back, it was pretty smooth. And we're still trying to streamline, streamline that even more to get done earlier. It helps with good communication. On that note, can't help but think about marching band and all them. And we're really fortunate here with the size of our school. I think we have, what, 18, 19, 20 sports at the high school, probably? Oh, jeez, O.P., we have everything for, and we're not so big that we're impersonal. As some of our colleagues used to say, nobody falls through the cracks. We have fine arts, we have the plays. I have a lot of these kids in class. I'm fortunate to know them. So I'll continue to keep pushing for those through future ECA opportunities as well. On that note, also, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. We're on to board member comments. So we'll start with Mr. Durnall.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Well, I want to thank all of you for coming. I want to thank all the administrators. I really appreciate you being here. Thank, thankful for the marching Mustangs, that what a great year they had. I thought the junior high presentation was fantastic. So I know she knew quite a few of those kids, so that was great. Happy Thanksgiving. And again, I just, I love this school system. I just hope to be a part of it for a little while longer, so.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Yeah. So I will reiterate, I'm super excited about the second-year champs, marching Mustangs. The trip looked amazing. I think I would have enjoyed that myself. So I'm glad you guys were able to go. And yeah, I'm super proud of our corporation. I think that everybody comes together and really works very hard to, you know, keep our administrators, our teachers, knowing that they are very, we feel blessed to have all of them. We couldn't do it without them. We can't do it without the leadership of Matt and Jerry as well. So I appreciate everything that you guys do. And have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Ditto, ditto to what Mr. Durnall and Ms. Jacobs said. Hopefully, everyone has a joyous and a, and a thankful Thanksgiving. And I'm looking forward in about two years, Drew, you can have a little bit longer speech. That was a little short tonight, but you did, you did a good job. So I'm just teasing you. So, but yeah, thank you for, for all the support that the whole package is doing. And, and safe travels this holiday season.
Marching Mustangs, the journalism trip, the, that tugs on my heart. As an old English teacher, you'll learn how to write. If you learned, if you learn journalism, you learn how to write. You have to learn how to write clearly, and you have to learn how to write well. So just keep at it. Good luck to all the, the winter sports. I got a chance to go to the Mustang Madness. And not only is he a writer, but Drew's also a basketball player, and I got to see him out there. That was a lot of fun. I, I think, congratulations to Matt Waltsworth for putting that together. And it was, it was a good time. 'Tis the Season, I'm looking forward to that. And rumor has it, there will be some other guest appearances during that show as well. And then just glad that we got all the contracts pinned down early. And I'm thankful to all of you that are getting those contracts. And thank you so much.
And concerning all these contracts, we really appreciate Christine and all the hard work she does in making sure our school corporation is covered as best that they can be. And we really appreciate all the time she puts in for us. We, the junior high journalism trip, I am so glad those kids got to go. That was, that was fascinating to hear what they got out of that. So that's, that's great. I'm so glad they could. Band two times, you know, in a row, winners. I mean, that's, that's champions. That's, that's awesome. And like we said, it's very difficult to win. And to do it twice in a row is amazing. Encourage you all to go to 'Tis. It is a great show. And those kids put lots and lots of hard effort into it. And they really do a great job pulling it off. And in addition to those, I actually was at the primary school this morning and saw little Mr. Liam Kerr in second grade be in Mrs. Goss's play. They put on a couple skits there. So they did a really good job as well. So give them a shout out. I hope that, I think we've done the best we can with the contracts and stuff this year. I, we want to strive and keep working as hard as we can to, to make things as comparable, compatible to, and if not better than the neighbors. And I don't want to, I want to mention the transportation department again, because I actually had talked recently to several bus drivers. And, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult for them. They have the students for a significant, significant part of the day sometimes, you know, especially those with farther routes. And, you know, they, they do a great job. And with the staff, which has been very, very difficult on them. So I'm glad we're making some gains in that. We thank Katz for coming out tonight and being with us. And we will adjourn. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone.